Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the order. This meeting is July 9th, 2020. City National Planning Board. Linda, can you go ahead and call the roll, please?
Sure, and just, just remember you are probably muted. And please let me know if there's anybody in the room with you as well. Mike Peterson?
Present alone.
Scott Leclair?
Here, alone.
Adam Varley? Ed Weber?
Here, alone.
Alderman David Tenza?
Alderwood Dan Schmidt?
I'm here and alone.
Dan Hudson?
Present and alone.
Maggie Harper?
Here and alone.
Bob Ballinger?
Here and alone.
And Larry Hirsch?
Here and alone.
Thank you, we have.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and in, in front of us for the folks on the planning board, we have minutes from the June 18th, 2020 Planning Board meeting. Has anybody had a chance to take a look at these and want to make a motion as to whether they're acceptable as submitted? Or need amendments, Mr. Ballinger?
Mr. Chair, yes, thank you. I've reviewed and I'd like to make a motion for approval of the June 8th, 2020 minutes.
Alright, that would be the June 18th, right?
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, thanks. So we have a motion to approve the June 18th, 2020 Planning Board minutes. Do I have a second on that motion?
Oh, sorry.
Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any discussion by the Planning Board members? Hearing none. Linda, can you make a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Ian Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Abstention.
And Bob Ballinger?
Didn't hear you, Bob.
Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion passes seven to zero and one abstention.
Okay, thanks. Reporter Communications, anybody from Planning?
Yep. So this evening you should receive three email, an email with three items. The first is an email from the Miles regarding case number four, they're in a butter. And then you have an email from Joe Mandola with engineering comments regarding four Blackstone Drive, which is case number one, two, and three. And then you have another email from Joe Mandola with engineering comments regarding case number four.
Okay, thanks. Any reports of committee liaison, anything?
The HTC had a meeting I was unable to attend because of a family situation, so sorry about that.
Alright. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and read the procedure of the meeting here and the introductory statement. So I'm Scott Leclair, I'm the City National Planning Board Chair. This is the meeting of July 9th, 2020, Nashville City Planning Board. As Chair of the Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. Please note there's no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which is authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are, one, providing public access to the meeting by telephone, additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing WebEx video conferencing through the city's IT department for this electronic meeting. Public access to the meeting is also provided via WebEx. And a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available at the city's website. Meeting is also being streamed to the city's website, can be streamed at the following. That is www.nashuanh.gov/318/ctv on Nashville's Community Link. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. Number two, we're providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. There's a public postings and where applicable, notice to a butter. Instructions, instructions have also been provided on the city's website at www.nashuanh.gov and publicly noticed at City Hall. Additionally, a link to the public WebEx access to this meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available at the city's website. Number three, we're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting. There are problems with access. If anybody has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3115. And there'll be someone there to help you connect. Number four, we'll adjourn this meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. I want everybody to know that I'm in control of this meeting and to the extent practical and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as I identified in its bylaws. Yeah, the applicant will first present their case, followed by questions by the Board, or allow for a rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition to the plan before the Board itself deliberates and determines an outcome. Applicants and their representatives and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and they're not required to be physically present. Applicants and their representatives and individuals required to appear before the Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange an alternative means of real-time participation if they're unable to use WebEx. Real-time public comment can be addressed via video to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. Please note that all votes during this meeting will be taken by a roll call vote. And the Planning Board, we will continue to be holding these meetings electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. The Planning Board, the Planning Department, the city staff, we're gonna thank everybody for our understanding and patience during this difficult time. Okay, so moving on with the agenda. Old Business Conditional Special Use Permits, there are none. Old Business Subdivision Plans, there are none. Old Business Site Plans, there are none. New Business Conditional Special Use Permits, case number one. Wilmar LLC Owner, Colby Enterprises LLC Applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to a lot gas station in the general business zone. This property is located at Four Blackstone Drive. I want to indicate that we're gonna hear this particular conditional special use permit application with case number two and case number three concurrently or together. So I'll read the second and the third cases here, which are all the same applicant and owner. So case number two is a new business subdivision plan. Again, Wilmar LLC Owner, Colby Enterprises LLC Applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed two-lot subdivision. This property is located at Four Blackstone Drive. And then for new business site plan, case number three. Again, applicant, Wilmar LLC Owner, Colby Enterprises LLC Applicant. This is an application and acceptance of proposed amendment NR 1943 to construct a 5,005 square foot convenience store with drive-through lane and self-service gas pumps. Again, this property is located at Four Blackstone Drive. So I'm gonna start with case number one, the new business conditional special use permit, and ask anybody from the Board who had a chance to review this application as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction. Whoever?
I make a motion to accept. Conditional use permit, number one.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept into jurisdiction, the conditional use permit, case number one. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion by the Board on that? Can we have a roll vote on that particular case jurisdiction, Linda?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Ed Varley? I'm sorry, Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna now hear if anybody would like to make a motion regarding a new business subdivision plan, case number two, same owner, as to whether this application is also acceptable for us to take jurisdiction. Mr. Weber?
Yes, I make a motion to take jurisdiction on new business number two subdivision.
So we have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction on case number two. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion by the Board on that? Linda, can we get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt? Dan Schmidt?
I don't think we can do all of them.
Um, I should be okay, yes?
We can hear you now, thanks.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. And now, new business site plan, case number three, same owner, same location. Anybody, Mr. Weber?
Yes, I'm hogging it. New business number three site plan that we take jurisdiction.
Alright, so a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber, case number three. Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion by the Board? Can we get another vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclair?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. So we have all three of those cases in jurisdiction now. So I guess, who we've got from the applicant that needs to speak or present first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Cheryl Premier. I'm an attorney with office at 20 Trafalgar Square in Nashville. Me this evening is our engineer, Chris Rice, Rob Duval, and Dylan Erickson. We also have from Colby Enterprises, Bob McAn, Andrew Deli Caprini, and Larry Coburn. Personally, the pieces of property that we're looking at is vacant. They were previously, those that can remember, a flower shop and then recently automotive sales area. The use that's being contemplated for this is a one-story, 5,005 square foot gas station convenience store. As you indicate, requesting three permits, three permits tonight. The conditional use permit meets all the criteria. We submitted a letter meaning those issues. Do you want me to read that letter and the nine issues or?
No, we have, we have it in our packet, so I think the Board will ask questions if they have any on any of the conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now we'll turn over to Chris Rice to take care of the subdivision plan and the site plan. Chris?
Thanks. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, we can hear you fine.
Alright. Let me just get my screen up. Can everybody see the screen okay?
Yep.
Alright. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight. My name is Chris Rice with TF Moran. I apologize, we could not be there in person to do this this evening. As mentioned, we're here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Colby Enterprises LLC. This is for the property that is located at Four Blackstone Drive, which I'm highlighting now with my cursor here. The property is approximately 2.8 acres in size. It's located in the general business zoning district and is tax map H Lot 520. There are no wetlands on the site. We are bordered to the east and west by commercial properties, residential property to the north, and round pond and commercial properties to the south. Property is currently vacant but does have a building and parking that was associated with the former vehicle sales business. And there's a large existing paved parking area in the rear of the site up in this location here. Access to the site is from the existing driveway that is on Blackstone Drive, right in this location, as well as a right-in-out access here onto Amherst Street. A variance was obtained back in 2018, August of 2018, to allow a gas station use within 750 feet of an existing gas station. Then in 2019, the Planning Board had approved the site plan in this location here, which was for a five-story, 120,000 square foot climate-controlled self-storage facility. That project has been withdrawn and is not moving forward. Then earlier this year in April of 2020, the Planning Board approved a lot line relocation in this general area, which I'll highlight better on the subdivision plan. But a small strip of property here was transferred to this abutting landowner here. And then in June of this year, the applicant received variances to allow five extra square feet of wall signage and five wall signs for the proposed site plan, which I will present tonight. So as noted, we have, if I just change the screen like that, do you now see the subdivision plan or do I have to share it a different way?
I'm just seeing a blank screen right now.
Okay, let me try it a different way, sorry.
You might have to stop sharing and then start sharing.
Yep.
Yeah, it's coming up. That's good.
Alright. So as noted, we have three applications before the Planning Board this evening. One is for the subdivision application, the second is the conditional use permit application, and then the site plan application. As discussed, since these are all related to one another, I'll present all three at once and then we're happy to answer any questions at the end of the presentation. So this here's the proposed subdivision plan. This area here is what was recently transferred to this abutting property. So the existing lot right now is what I'm kinda tracing around with the cursor here. That all is one lot that totals 2.8 acres and we are proposing a subdivision. Basically split the property in half, which lot will be approximately 1.4 acres in size. Both of the lots meet all of zoning and subdivision regulations. We do have a waiver request as part of this application, which is from Section 190-282, Section B, Part 9, and 22. This section requires that we show existing conditions and physical features within 1,000 feet of the property. So we've requested a waiver as we cannot field survey abutting properties without permission and it is a rather expensive undertaking. We have located physical features within the right-of-way and we've provided an aerial plan as part of the application that show buildings and physical seat features on the abutting properties within 1,000 feet. And all the properties are serviced by municipal sewer and water and there are no impacts to abutting properties as part of either application. As was stated, we did also submit a conditional use permit application. As noted in the staff memorandum, the proposed gas station use is permitted in the general business zone by conditional use permit. We've addressed the criteria in the application provided and our understanding is the staff has re, reviewed, excuse me, reviewed this and that there are no issues. And then we get to the site. Sorry, I'm just trying to bring that up quick.
Yep.
Alright, so. I'm a bit of a glitch just getting it up here, I apologize. I'm sorry, I don't know why it's bringing that one back up again. I apologize, I'm having a hard time. It's not switching very well for me between this and another plan.
It's alright, we can wait. You're here.
Here we go. I apologize for that. So here's the proposed site plan that's reflected on the to-be subdivided lot. Again, we're proposing to demolish the existing building on site and construct the one-story, 5,005 square foot gas station and convenience store with a drive-through lane for coffee, along with associated access parking and site improvements. The proposed base, the proposed building does have a basement for storage and mechanical equipment. There are six concrete islands for gas dispensers underneath the proposed canopy for a total of 12 fueling stations. The drive-through lane has adequate stacking in excess of 160 feet, as well as a bypass lane provided. Per the Planning Board regu, per the planning, per the regulations, between 25 and 50 parking spaces are required. We have 43 parking spaces shown, which includes the 12 spaces at the pumps. It's anticipated that this store would be open for 24 hours. The sites to be serviced by municipal sewer and water, as well as gas, telephone, and electrical service. The plans also show a loading zone behind the building and an area for fuel truck loading. And there is an air tower also proposed on the site. For stormwater, a drainage analysis was submitted with the application. A closed drainage system is proposed with catch basins and pipes that collect stormwater runoff from the site and directs it to one of two StormTech underground detention systems. These systems provide pre-treatment, treatment, and detention of the stormwater. The first system is located in this general area here and handles the pavement from this area, the drive-through lane and the bypass area, as well as all of the roof. And this system infiltrates the runoff into native soils. The second system is located in this area here and it collects the remainder of the parking areas and the fueling areas. An oil-water separator is proposed, which runoff will enter prior to entering the StormTech system. And this particular StormTech system uses a filter media to treat the runoff, which is then collected in an underdrain and discharged to the municipal system. Energy analysis provided shows that we match or decrease the peak rate of runoff for all storm events, which includes the two, 10, 25, 50, and 100-year storm events. And the volumes from the two-year storm are completely detained within each practice. In addition, we've supplied a traffic impact and access study as part of the application. This report shows that the project has minimal effects on the Amherst Street corridor. The traffic increment will be less than two trips per minute during the PM and Saturday peak hours. This is on a roadway network that has the capacity for well over 3,000 trips per hour during those same time periods. The conclusion of the report was that the traffic can be safely accommodated by the existing traffic network with no significant negative impacts or need for mitigation to adjacent roadway networks. The only proposed mitigation is to slightly modify the timing at the Blackstone Drive intersection to keep that intersection functioning optimally. In addition, the applicant has agreed to the requested contribution of approximately $14,000 for the installation of wireless communications for the Amherst Street corridor. We also supplied a landscape plan with the application, which shows plantings throughout the property. We've shown approximately 30 trees, along with 170 shrubs, plants, and ground covers, which include dogwoods, hydrangeas, junipers, rhododendrons, arborhoies, et cetera. And we have nine waiver requests as part of this application. The first is from Section 190-215G. This requires that redevelopment of previously developed sites must meet the stormwater management standards to the maximum extent, extent possible, which we have. The goal is to reduce impervious area by a minimum of 20% or meet the open space requirement. So we weren't sure if we needed this waiver or not. We basically were just keeping along the same lines as the prior application for the self-storage building in the rear. We, we exceed the open space requirements, so therefore we feel we meet this requirement because the regulation, regulation states or, but we submitted the waiver request just to be on the safe side to let the Board know the open space requirement is 10% and we have over 31% on site. The second waiver request is from Section 190-209A, Part 1, which requires that curb cuts and driveway approaches be between 24 and 36 feet wide. So the existing driveways are not adequate right now for trucks and emergency vehicles. What you see here on the plan is, is we've shown a paved drive aisle, which does meet the requirements of curb cut widths. But we have these concrete aprons on the sides, which are flush with the pavement that are for the trucks and emergency vehicle tires to run over in, in the event that they're needed. But we feel we've well-defined the access areas and these curb cuts were approved as part of the prior site plan. But again, that project is not moving forward, so we requested the waiver again. waiver request number three is from Section 109-209A, Part 4, which requires the inside turning radii shall be a minimum of 15 feet and a maximum of 30 feet. The radii at this intersection here is 10 feet and the reason is, is you have to tie the radius in before the property line. The width of the driveway, however, does allow for safe exiting of vehicles and trucks. And we exceed that radius here on these concrete aprons. But again, that's to facilitate trucks and emergency vehicles. The fourth waiver request is from Section 190-89A, which requires that light levels shall not exceed 0.2-foot candles at any property line. We have a slight exceedance in this location here near the drive-through window. However, the applicant does own the abutting property and there are no exceedances to any abutting properties. The only other area of exceedance is here in the right-of-way, the intersection of Blackstone Drive and here at the intersection of Amherst Street, which we feel is a reasonable request for safety at the driveway entrances. The fifth waiver request is from Section 190-184D, Part 1, which states that parking aisles shall not contain more than 10 spaces in a row without a planted median. We meet this in all areas on the site, with the exception of this front row of parking here. We have 12 spaces shown. This is at the main entrance and where people are most likely to park if they're not fueling. We're trying to provide as much parking adjacent to the building as possible to minimize pedestrian traffic crossing travel lanes for the fueling. We think it's a reasonable request where we're only two spaces over and have provided adequate landscaping throughout the property. Waiver request number six is for Section 190-172, Part D, Part 2, which states that exterior building materials shall include, without limitation, brick, wood, sandstone, concrete block or split face block, et cetera. The materials we've proposed, which I'll show some elevation shortly, are aesthetically, aesthetically appealing and are associated with the branding of the Seasons Corner Market prototypical store. They represent a quality image and one in which customers are accustomed to seeing at other Seasons Corner markets. And in addition, the appearance of, of the proposed building does not drastically differ visually from the allowed materials. Waiver request number seven is from Section 190-172E1. This states that all sides of a principal building that directly face an abutting public street shall feature at least one customer entrance. This particular plan has our main customer entrance in the front of the building. We do have two other emergency doors for exits, but they are not customer entrances. And we feel it's a reasonable request to just have the one that's at the front door where most people are going to park. And waiver request number eight is from Section 190-279EE. This is the same waiver that was requested as part of the subdivision, which requires physical features and existing conditions within 1,000 feet of the property. Again, we've provided an aerial plan that shows all of those features and all the sites are serviced by municipal sewer and water and there are no adverse impacts to any of the surrounding properties. And the final waiver request, number nine, is from- And the final waiver request number nine is from section one ninety dash twenty-four F, part five, part E. And this states that all stormwater management systems must be compliant with the requirements set for, set within the stormwater management standards. Basically, it states that you must infiltrate the entire ten-year storm event. We have complied with this for the StormTech system in this area. But the state requirements were told are that you cannot infiltrate the stormwater that is collected from areas that receive, that are for, from fueling areas. And so we have provided stormwater treatment and an oil-water separator prior to discharging to the municipal system. And again, we've matched or reduced the peak rates of runoffs, but we cannot by state requirements infiltrate that runoff. Then, uh, let me just stop sharing this, I'll bring up the architectural plan quick. And then here's a copy of the architectural plan that was submitted. It includes stone veneer, aluminum panels and storefront composite metal panels and architectural shingles as well as EPHUS materials. And we think it is an attractive looking building, I also have a side view here on the next page. We did just receive engineering comments this afternoon, but we are committed to working with staff to address any comments, most appear to be minor comments and general cleanup items. We do appreciate the board's consideration of these applications and I would like to thank city staff for their assistance through the process. And we are happy to answer any, any questions that you may have.
Okay, thanks. Couple of questions and the board members, when you have questions, if you want the drawings back up, just ask the engineer there. So I just had a couple of questions regarding the canopy systems on the, over the dispensers. You probably heard us talk about this before, but is there gonna be a parapet arrangement that blocks? The visual look, typically there's fire suppression canisters and piping and things on top of the canopy. And we're not looking for a design that you can see that. Other applicants have accommodated that with like a parapet around the top of the canopy that is designed to shield the view of that equipment. Do you know if that's part of the design or can you commit to making that part of the design if that's? Not there.
Mister Chairman, maybe he can be. Could, could answer that question better. Andy, would you turn on your button and can you answer that question? Or is there someone else from Seasons that better could answer it?
No.
Make sure you state your name and address for the record as well.
Absolutely, Andrew Deli Carpeini. Seven Josephine Drive, Smithfield Road Island. I, and the members of the board, Mister Chairman, I appreciate the time tonight. As far as the, the look of the canopy itself, the tanks will be located above the canopy. The stature of the canopy itself is probably three feet high. And since the canopy itself is probably going to be about fifty feet high with a three-foot reveal. We've never had issues where you can actually see the, the tanks themselves up above the canopy. So they won't be visible from the street, especially since the elevation of the site. It elevates up, the, the canopy themselves, the, the tanks for the fire suppression. I don't think you have anything to worry about that there'll be any visibility for those, for those tanks on, on top of the canopy because of the reveal that wraps around the canopy.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think that's important to us, so as long as that visible, visual block is there. Can you address to the, the sprinkler or the suppression? Nozzle structure under the canopy, so we've seen somewhere it's a litany of uncapped galvanized pipe hanging underneath. We very much prefer to see capped. Oh.
More than happy to mention. The, the fire suppression itself, I'm sorry. The fire suppression itself, there's a minimum height that the, the nozzles have to be from the ground. So we'll comply with the requirements for the nozzles to be even ground, what we do is we cap all the nozzles. With a rubber cap that slides around them and what they're really made for is to keep the bees from creating nests inside of those fire suppression pipes. And then our normal habit is to go back and to paint. All the pipes that can be seen, the same color as the deck of the canopy, which will be white. So it has a tendency to blend into the, the visual look of it. Yeah, and the last thing I'd see is, I call it the spider look, where you have all these arms coming down, so we do paint them. And the ends will have a cap that pops off when the fire suppression is active.
Right, okay. Thanks, I appreciate that. That last question for me, I'll pass it on to the board folks, at least for the time being, is maybe this is from Mister Rice. Can you review the, the, the entry and exit motions for vehicles? You can bring the site plan back up if you don't, if that would be probably helpful. I'm particularly interested in the, the design details that are. That help people understand sort of how they enter and exit from Blackstone. You know, not just, you know, where the lanes are, is there striping arrows, that kind of stuff? And then how does traffic separate leaving, you know, coming in and leaving from Amherst?
Okay. Give me just one second to bring that back up.
Yep. And if you could be specific about striping, curbing, signage, arrows, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll start with the Amherst intersection here. So. We do have curbing on both sides of this entrance and there's a striped median here.
Okay, that's a level flush.
That's all, yep, that's all flush striping in that location. There is a stop sign in this location, so traffic that goes through the traffic signal would come down and make a right into the site. We've also provided truck turning movements as part of the site plans. As well as fire truck movements that have been approved by the fire department that show that they can make the movement in this way as well as through Blackstone. Traffic exiting the site through this exit is restricted to a right out, so they can only go right because there's the median down Amherst Street.
Right. Is there signage there anyway?
We can add a no right turn sign if you'd like, if that's.
Yeah, unfortunately, you know, we have people going the wrong way on Amherst Street sometimes.
Okay. Yes, we can add that just below the stop sign in that location. And then on Blackstone Drive, again, we've run truck templates and emergency vehicle templates that would basically make a right off of Amherst Street. Come up Blackstone Drive, make a left into the site. And then they can either exit back out this way or exit out through Amherst Street. If you wanna head east on Amherst Street, you would wanna come out Blackstone Drive to use the signalized intersection.
Right. Is there any striping on that inlet or exit?
No, this is, this is not as wide, this is twenty-four feet, so it's a standard driveway width here. And then again, we've got the separation of materials here for the concrete, that's really, again, just for the vehicular, truck, emergency vehicle movements.
Yep.
Back when we were working on the original site plan for the self-storage facility, originally we had these as rumble strips, but the problem became that there's an existing ADA walkway that comes all the way up Blackstone Drive and that rumble strip would have impeded that, so we. Worked out with the city engineer to just have a differentiation of materials so that it's clear where the access drive is, but there is the area there for the wheels to travel over in those instances.
Okay.
Chris, we do have painted stop stripes on, on the exits of the driveways, correct?
Yes, yes, we do, yep.
I just wanna make one correction, you had said we could put a, a no right sign leaving the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yeah, sorry about that.
No, we're just. Okay, thanks. What about the, the sort of back exit into the other property, what's happening there?
So.
Can people just drive through there and come out on the other side or?
There, there's an existing gate here right now, which we plan to just place at this time. This is existing access to that rear paved area, but it is gated and we intend to leave the gate in place and just redo what's shown here in the darker gray. I'm not aware of any plans right now for that development of the rear property, but when that, whenever that comes to be, they'll have to incorporate our site plan into their site plan.
Okay, and I guess there's no requirement for cross-access stuff at this point because it's the same owner or what?
Yes, but we are gonna, I think that was one of the comments from city engineering just asking that question, so just. We are gonna provide a cross-access easement from this, for the benefit of this property. But yes, they're both currently owned by the same entity.
Alright. Okay, I don't wanna hog all the time here, can, and folks from the board, just go ahead and unmute and.
I have a question.
Okay, Mister Peterson.
If a vehicle is traveling eastbound on Amherst Street, is there a turning lane to turn left onto Blackstone Drive to get to the gas station?
I am not positive, turn, one second, I'll, I'll double check. I know you can take lefts at that light, I just don't know if there's a dedicated turn lane there.
Okay.
But I'm just gonna bring up the Google Earth again real quick. Let's confirm.
Yeah, right now your screen recorder is not showing what you're looking at, it's just black.
I'm sorry, I was just, it's still loading right now.
That's okay, yep, you got it.
There is, there is a dedicated left.
There is, Mister Hudson, yep. Can we can see your screen now, oh, you lost it.
Oh, I thought you, I'm sorry, I thought the question was answered, so I went back to the site plan, but if you'd like me to bring the air, I can do that.
I think, are you all okay with that, Mister Peterson?
Yes, I am, thank you. Thank you, Mister Ballinger, for pointing out there is a dedicated turning lane.
Yeah, I think it was Mister Hudson, but.
Hudson.
We don't give anybody credit. Other board members, questions?
Weber.
Mister Weber.
Yes. Few questions. Are all the sidewalks that are on your, the new, are they gonna be handicap access? It just is not really clear that they're down. On both entrances and are they both handicap sloped?
Yes, yep, here and here as well as the ones on site here near the ADA spaces and the ramp for whoever needs it just to access the trash area.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Parking on the south. East, part down by the, where the tank, you know, where people gonna get gas? Yes, are those sufficient for people to back out with a truck or if a person with a truck, there's sufficient back and turning for them? Has that been, have you tried that out, in other words, with your simulated turning with a pickup truck?
I, I can, I can run a template to be sure this aisle width here is the minimum twenty-two feet, that's the, the thinnest spot on site that we have, most other areas are, are much wider. But I'm happy to look at it, that should be enough, they might have to, you know, make a, a point turn to do it, but yes, they can, that and not, not impact the canopy.
Okay. It's all for now. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mister Weber.
Yeah, sorry. On the exit onto Amherst right turn, is it possible to put a? A temperature painted arrow with a turn so that you see it? People tend to look at down on arrows and follow arrow more than they do signs, they bypass signs and, oh, I didn't see that. Of course, I know, can't turn left, there's no way.
Yeah. Yes, that's no problem, we can add a painted arrow at that, that exit.
If you could put it in high-temperature paint, now you'll never have to do it again probably for years and years and years.
Okay.
Okay. That's it.
Other board members, questions?
Mister Chair.
Yep, go ahead, Mister Ballinger.
Thank you, Mister Chair, a couple of questions. Did, did the applicant engineer have a chance to review the comments today? There, there was, I believe ninety comments from engineering today. And I, I guess the one that stuck out to me the most was the moratorium regarding pavement on Amber Street and Blackstone Drive. If, if we were to put a condition of approval of responding or agreeing to all ninety comments that were issued today? Would the applicant be able to do that and opt-in including how they would deal with the pavement moratorium?
Yes, I can answer that, I, I apologize because we just get those comments late this afternoon, we have gone through most of them and again, most are just cleanup items. I think we can address all the comments, the moratorium is one that we'll have to just coordinate with DPW, I'm not sure if we have, we'll either have to meet the moratorium requirements that are specified in the ordinance. Or come to an agreement, I know for another project I had done in town where we were doing something as simple as removing some curbing and adding curbing in another area. That we were able to use some other methods to reduce the amount of work that had to be done within the city roads, but we'll, we'll coordinate that all with DPW as necessary and. And or meet the requirements if that's what's needed.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mister Rice, Mister Chair, another question if I may?
Sure.
With regard to the driveway on Blackstone Drive. Would it be reasonable to provide a, a short section of double yellow? pavement marking just to reinforce the fact that that is in fact two-way flow? You are allowed entrance and exit off of Blackstone. It, it may be redundant, I'm just putting it out there.
We can, we can certainly add that if you'd like, I, I might make it white to match the stop sign striping to keep it all consistent. Or get out a traffic flow arrow similar to the exit onto Amherst Street and just do the painted arrow in and out if that is more amenable.
Okay, thank you. One, one further question regarding access. For the driveway on Amherst Street, even though there is a median, was there any consideration given? To perhaps angling the driveways to, to reinforce the right-in, right-out only prohibition, if you will? I, I understand there's a median, but it's, it's, it's not a very beefy median, it's, I think it's only about two, three-foot width. And anybody that's ever driven in winter knows that. The median isn't always observed, especially on those smaller strips. I didn't know if, if perhaps the driveways could be angled if that would help reinforce the, the intended turn prohibitions at that location.
Oh, I can take a look, I mean, it might, I think striped arrows, I could add one for in and out, it'd be more clear. I'm just hesitant to change the angles because we were very careful with running the truck movements, both for the tractor-trailers for the fueling as well as the fire truck apparatus. So I don't wanna commit to changing anything if it's gonna negatively impact those movements, but if not, I could certainly look to angle the striped median aisle to kind of. Direct people that you're, you're going right.
Yeah, it, it was, it was more, Mister Rice, it was more of a curiosity question, I, I understand there's been thorough review by engineering and, and fire, just, just, just. Personal experience i- i- in the future, if there is some way to, to perhaps angle those driveways and you're still able to meet the requirements for, for larger deliveries as well as safety vehicles. Sometimes those angled driveways, again, it's, it just reinforces the intended prohibition.
But.
Oh, of course, yes.
That, that is, that is all I have, Mister Chair, thank you for the time, Mister Rice, thank you for, for your responses.
Mister Chairman? I have. What are the plans for the sidewalk along Blackstone Drive? I saw some reference of the fact it was gonna, gonna be rebuilt or something, is, is there actually a sidewalk there right now?
There is an existing sidewalk there right now. One of the comments we received today noted that those sidewalks appeared to be in disrepair and we've been asked to consider replacing them as part of our application. I have not had a chance to discuss that yet with the applicant, they want to commit to that entirely.
When, when I look at the, at the site plan in front of me, is that actually the grayed area on the property line there, yep, where your cursor?
Yeah, so, so the, so the dark gray is what we would be constructing and then the light gray is what it exists and would remain at this time. Based on the current plan.
I see, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Yes, I have a quick question.
Go ahead, Mister Peterson.
Could the applicant please explain what is the purpose of the air tower, what is that for?
That, that's, if you wanted the air pressure to fill up your tires? Have you ever seen those where you put the irons in and it? That, that's, uh, if you wanted the air pressure to fill up your tires. Have you ever seen those where you put the air in and it? Gives you air to, to inflate your tires.
Okay, thank you. I was just wondering what, what a tower was, but.
Oh, it's, uh, that's just what they, that's what they call it. It's on a little concrete pedestal and that's located right here on the site where my cursor is.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by the board? Uh, Mr. Rice, he could maybe stop sharing. I can see the board a little bit better.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. Um, so I have a question regarding the diesel. Is there? One is diesel being dispensed, um, and if it is, I guess you'll probably have to bring the site plan back up. Can you show me the location where you intend to have diesel dispensing? And I guess particularly, I'm concerned with, uh, vehicles with trailers cutting off access to the inlets, you know, exits, stuff like that.
Uh, when they're fueling?
Yes, right.
Okay, uh, well, I'll probably let Andrew, if you don't mind, answer the question on the diesel. I know that there are diesel, um. Diesel gas sales, but I, I'm not exactly sure if they're only at certain pumps. So I'll let him answer that question, but relative fuel loading. Uh, the tanks are here underneath the pavement, uh, added this kind of pull-off area for the truck. And so their hose would be going across and it, it leaves adequate two-way traffic. The amount of space from here to here is about thirty-five feet to the canopy to the edge of the pavement. Um, and even with the pumps being filled, you have about twenty-five feet from the edge of the canopy to the fuel. Where the hose would be. So there's adequate two ways there.
Yeah, um, our concern generally is, um, you know, like a landscape vehicles coming in to fill up diesel. And they have, uh, you know, eighteen, twenty trailer hanging off the back. And my, you know, I'd be probably pretty significantly concerned if the dispenser right by the inlet to Amherst Street. Had diesel, you know, because I could see a trailer basically hanging in the middle of the, of the, um. The exit, or are they in the end in particular, someone coming in there? But I think there are other pumps that could be viable on this. So, yeah, Mr. Harpini, is it? Did, did you want to respond to that?
Sure, thank you. Uh, we operate, right now we operate about sixty-six locations, forty of them are seasoned. Uh, my family, my wife and I developed the brand probably about seven years ago. The sites that we have been rebuilding. We put diesel at all the islands. So this site will have twelve fueling facilities, uh, and twelve diesel. Ability to fill diesel at any dispenser. Uh, and the reason we do that is just to make it easier. More and more cars are becoming, more and more trucks are becoming diesel. The trucks themselves, the, the ones that tend to use these facilities from what we've seen. Uh, the largest ones are really what they call the day trippers, which could be a twenty-six foot box that could pull in here to fill up. Um, it's really not made for any type of semis, which would probably be handled better at, uh. At nesting area type of facilities. As far as the trailers, the islands themselves are about twenty-six feet long. So it's a substantial length that the islands are. Um, we want the same situation happen day in, day out. It really doesn't block off the facilities. This has got one of the larger, uh, drive max between the dispenser and the parking in the front. And the dispenser and the island in the front. Normally, we're at, uh, about, uh, thirty feet from the dispenser. I know this is substantially more. So I don't think even if a truck came in with a trailer behind it, we could call it any type of obstruction on this facility.
Yeah, Mr. Rice, maybe if you could zoom in. So my concern, I guess, is let's say. There's a truck with a trailer on it. It's at the first dispenser right where you got your cursor. Or potentially even the inside to the right of it, because sometimes they have it, you know, on either side. And you're coming in off Amherst Street, you're basically, you know, and Amherst Street traffic is pretty fast. And you're coming in right there and this could be winter, so there could be a pretty good snowbank there in the edge there. And if you have a trailer right there.
So just scaling it off quick to give you an idea, if you assume that the truck parked in the center of the island. And let's just say at a, uh, a twenty-six foot vehicle, that vehicle operated at the end of this dash here.
Mm-hmm.
So it's kind of deceiving because of the distance. That's what, yeah, so I mean, with a trailer, you might be out a little further, but there's still. Even from this spot to the edge of the curbing is thirty feet. Um, so there's a lot of room to move. And if you see somebody's blocked, you can always go straight and around.
Yeah. Uh, I'm, I'm not sure, um, happy with that. So how much of an impact would it be to not have diesel on that island?
Well, I, I, for us, it's, it's more just trying to keep consistency with the customers. So this way they know that, you know, I. I think sometimes it creates more chaos on a facility. If somebody pulls up to an island and doesn't have diesel and they have to get out of their car, have to turn around. Go find another island and so forth. Um, honestly, if, if you're gonna have the trailers coming off of this, off of. Mostly the trailers are gonna come off of one-on-one if, if trucks that are carrying any type of pulling any pump a trailer. So they're gonna be pointing in to the store. So chances are if they're trying to fill anything on the, um. On the trailer side, the truck will probably be, uh, projecting more on the store side rather than the exit side. So I, I don't think it will be as, as much of an issue as, as it could be. Um, my only concern, like I said, is just creating a little more confusion on the, the islands themselves if people have to jockey around.
Okay.
Yeah, again, there is a good amount of distance here. I mean, this is over thirty-five feet in this location to the canopy. So you've got thirty-five feet, twenty-six feet, and then another thirty-five to forty feet out here. So you've got. A good amount of room if somebody, you know, just pulls their truck to where they need to, to, to fuel, I think, without, uh, impeding the traffic.
Okay. Did you mention the hours of operation?
I need to just mention one last thing. This is, this site's probably at least five, eight, maybe ten feet wider than we would normally build on our facilities. Because we have the advantage of having the depth at this facility. And, uh, at, at the facilities that we've had, we've rebuilt dozens of these over these last couple of years. And really don't have a problem where, uh, cars can't maneuver in and out of the facilities. Usually the, the people driving the trailers are pretty respectful, will try to line up on the center and people that are coming into the properties. I don't think we'll have a problem with, uh, being able to accommodate both.
Okay. Uh, other questions from the board? I'm not hearing anybody. You can stop sharing, Mr. Ray. Sure.
Uh, what, I'm just curious, what kind of protection you have on that end? Um, pump on the east side, near the parking. To protect it from, from someone backing into it.
Well, ag- again, this, this is the edge of the canopy, but that's above the pavement. So you really have, uh. About twenty-six feet to, to where a car to the edge of, if a car was parked there. If there's not a car parked there, you have about. Thirty-two feet to back up. More than adequate space.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Harper. Uh, other questions from the board? I am not seeing any questions there. Um, all right, at this point in time, I would open up then if there are any questions from. Uh, those outside the board that are listening in. Uh, if you are interested in, um. Or have a question, you can go ahead and, um, unmute, state your name and address for the record and, um, ask your question. We also have a raise hand feature. Linda, you can watch that.
Yeah, I don't see anybody with their hand raised.
Okay. So, seeing, hearing none, um, I will go ahead and take it one more time back to the board. Uh, while we're in the hearing, are there any more questions for the applicant, um, or staff actually during this hearing portion? Mr. Weber?
Yes, dates.
Um, July ninth?
No, the dates, any change date?
Uh, yeah, um, it would be July ninth for the site plan, um. Number twelve, we'd want to add today's date, July ninth.
Yeah, a second. So the site plan.
It's number twelve, yeah.
Had to get a pen. Wasn't prepping here. Twelve. So the date is?
July ninth.
July ninth, okay.
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 Any other questions from the board on, uh, during the hearing? Hearing none, I'll, I'll go ahead and close the hearing and, uh, I'm gonna move into the meeting. So. Um, so we have in front of us, uh, three applications really. Remind everybody we have to consider each one independently. Um, the conditional use permit, um, looks pretty straightforward to me. Um, we've had, you know, obviously this site has come across, um, to the board for some of you, uh, myself included several times. Um, this seems like to me a pretty good use for the site, um, potentially better than we've seen in the past. Um, I've looked at some of the waivers. Most of them look pretty straightforward to me. Um, don't have any particular concerns about them. Does anybody else from the board want to? Have any comments or, or discussion points during the meeting?
Hudson?
Mr. Hudson, yeah.
I just wanted to, uh, thank the applicant for being willing to make the contribution towards the, the, uh, signal. Uh, wireless in connection. That's something that the corridor needs. And we've asked, uh, them as well as other applicants to kind of split that up. Um, so we can get that done. So I wanted to thank them for that. Um, I do apologize again for the late. Um, submitted of comments, um, and were mitigating factors, uh, Mr. Mendola had a computer failure last week. Uh, there's always, uh, always reasons, but, um, we'll continue to try to do better and get those things, uh, more timely for the board's review.
Okay, thanks. Other comments, questions of the board? Being none, does anybody want to make a motion? Mr. Weber?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll start with number one, case number one, please.
Right, new business number one, a conditional use permit for, uh, for Blackstone. Uh, drive with no stipulations at meets, um, NRO one thirty-three F.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to, uh, approve new business number one. Uh, with no stipulations. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Any discussion by the board on that? Hearing none, can we get a roll vote on that, Linda?
Yeah, uh, Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, uh, Mr. Weber, were you gonna make a motion on number two?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay. New business number two subdivision, uh. For Blackstone Drive and the, um. It meets, the plan meets NRO one ninety, one thirty-eight G with, uh. Waiver request, um, for waiver one ninety, two eighty-two B, nine and twenty-two. Which requires existing condition is granted. Finding waiver will not be contrary in spirit in ten of the regulations. Two through four as written.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to approve new business number two. Um, with the stipulations is, uh, the four of them as stated by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson. Do we have any discussion on that? Can we get a roll vote on new business number two?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
All right, thanks. Um, how about regarding new business number three, site plan, Mr. Weber?
Yes, uh, new business number three, site plan, uh, for Blackstone Drive. Seeing that the plan meets NRO one ninety, one forty-six D. Uh, the first request waiver one ninety to, uh, twenty-one. Uh, I'm sorry, two fifteen G, which requires redevelopment site meets certain stormwater standards is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary in spirit in ten of the regulation. Number two, request for waiver one ninety, two oh nine A one, which requires maximum width of thirty-six feet is. Granted, finding the waiver will not be contrary hence to the spirit intent of the regulation. Number three, request for waiver one ninety, two oh nine A four. Which requires minimum inside turning radius of fifteen feet is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulation. Number four, the waiver of one ninety eighty-nine A. Treat, uh, requires light levels should not exceed point two foot candles at any property line is granted. Finding that the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulation. Number five, request for waiver NRO one ninety, one eighty-four D one. Which requires medium islands for every ten parking spaces is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary in spirit in ten of the regulations. Number six, request to waiver one ninety, one seventy-two D two. Which requires certain exterior building materials is granted. Finding the waiver will not be contrary. To the spirit intent of the regulation. Number seven, the request for waiver one ninety, one seventy-two E one. Which requires all side, sides of a principal building, uh, facing abutted public streets to have at least one customer entrance. Is granted and finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. Number eight, their quest for waiver one ninety, two seventy-nine E E. Which requires a plan sheet of existing conditions to, on site and the adjacent parcels is granted. Finding the waiver will may be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. Number nine, the request for waiver one ninety dash twenty-four F five E. Which requires stormwater management system to be compliant with requirements for the ten-year, twenty-four-hour. Storm event is granted. Will not be, uh, the waiver, finding the waiver will not be contrary to the spirit and ten of the regulation. Uh, ten eleven has written, well, prior to the chair signing the plan, all comments. And an email from Joe Mendola, uh, street construction engineer dated July ninth, twenty twenty. Shall be addressed to the satisfaction of the engineering department, uh, thirteen through seventeen as written.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Weber to approve with the seventeen stipulations as stated. Do we have a second on that? Second by Mr. Peterson? Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thank you, uh, everyone from the applicant's team.
Yes, thank you very much.
All right.
Hope you all have a good evening.
Uh, you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, member of the board, I'd just like to say thank you. We, uh, purchased a, a location in Nashua about a year and a half ago. And it's been a great experience in the town and hopefully this will just continue our, our great relationship with the town. So I do appreciate all the help and attention to, to the project this evening.
All right, thanks. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and move on with our agenda. So next up, new business site plan. This is case number four. This is Oakwood Square LLC, care of the Stabile Company's owner. Application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR six-six-nine. To construct a forty-space parking lot. This property is located at number six through eight High Pine Avenue. Um, does anybody in the board had a chance to review this application, want to make a motion as to whether it's ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Nobody wants to, I will.
Mr. Weber?
Uh, so moved.
If you have a motion to take jurisdiction on new business site plan number four by Mr. Weber, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson, uh, any discussion? Can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes, yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks, um, so we have someone from the owner or the applicant, I should say, that wants to present the application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me alright?
Uh, we can, yep.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, my name is Ethan Beedles, I'm a project manager at Hayner Swanson, doing business at three Congress Street in Nashua. Um, I'm gonna share my screen real quick if that's okay.
Yep.
I am here tonight representing Oakwood Square LLC seeking approval for a proposed thirty-two space parking lot located at six to High Pine, High Pine Street in Nashua. Um, I'm, I'm gonna start off by presenting a brief overview of the project and then be happy to answer any questions that you may have. The existing site is located, the existing site which I'm highlighting with my cursor, it's located at six to eight High Pine Ave in Nashua. Um, it is known to the city of Nashua Assessor's Department as map E, lot one forty-five and is zoned RC, C urban residence. The lot in total is two point three eight acres in size and is majority developed as the Oakwood Square condominiums. Oakwood Square contains ten two-story buildings totaling twenty-nine townhouse style units. Access to the site is provided via two curb cuts onto High Pine Ave. And the lot also has some frontage on Cypress Lane down to the south. The lot is abutted by High Pine Ave to the west, Cypress Lane to the south and residential users in all other directions. The owner of Oakwood Square also has an ownership stake in the abutting Pine Hill Gardens, which is located where my cursor is here and then also down to the southwest here. Um, currently there are fifty-five existing parking spaces on the lot. Additionally, there is a small undeveloped portion, if you can see, can you see my screen share just moved? Yes, oh, maybe not.
Uh, yeah, we can see your screen, yep.
Oh, so there's a small undeveloped portion of land to the south of the condos. Um, and this area is mostly cleared due to a large overhead ease, electrical easement. If you can kind of see some of these electric lines which run over this parcel, this area of the parcel. I'm gonna switch to the site plan now. The proposed project is, it is proposed to construct a thirty-two space parking lot on the undeveloped portion of land to the south of the condos. Over time, our client has noticed a high peak parking demands at both the Oakwood Square condominiums as well as the abutting Pine Hill Gardens, which are, which is in a, a large apartment complex. There will be an agreement in place for this parking lot to serve as an overflow for both Oakwood Square and the abutting Pine Hill Gardens. Access to the proposed parking lot will be provided via a new curb cut onto Cypress Lane, which is where my cursor is circling right now. There's no proposed site lighting as part of this project. Stormwater management will be provided to mitigate the impact of the additional impervious areas on the site. The intent of the stormwater management is to take advantage of the good soils in the area with two small recharge slash infiltration style basins, one to the east and one to the west of the property, of the parking lot. The first infiltration basin to the west of the parking lot, um, excuse, yeah, to the west of the, excuse me, to the east of the parking lot will intercept the water coming onto the project area from an off-site, off-site properties. A second small infiltration basin is proposed on the western side of the parking lot. And this will collect and store runoff from the proposed parking lot. The goal of the basins to provide treatment of stormwater through infiltration and also additional storage to reduce the peak flows of stormwater runoff leaving the site. Additionally, each basin contains a, a lea, a gravel leaching trench and to, and a leaching catch basin, both to add additional storage to the basins as well as promote, help promote recharge in the frozen ground condition. We're here tonight seeking two waivers as outlined in a waiver request to the board dated June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. The first waiver of NRO section one ninety dash two nine, two seventy-nine EE. And this is related to showing the existing conditions throughout the site and on abutting parcels. As described above, the proposed development is really focused on a small undeveloped portion of land on the site. Additional survey work to provide existing conditions on the surrounding properties is costly and does not provide really any significant benefit to this project. The second waiver we're seeking is a waiver of NRO section one ninety dash one forty-six D related to the maximum parking allowed on the site. As I mentioned earlier, the site currently contains fifty-five parking spaces, take spaces or one point nine space per unit, which is currently the maximum allowed by code. With the proposed thirty-two space parking lot addition, the prod, the project proposes a total of eighty-seven parking spaces on the site. Oakwood Square and the abutting Pine Hill Gardens will, have been experiencing high peak parking demand. So we feel that this proposed solution helps keep surplus parking off of public streets. In summary, we believe the site plan application is complete and conforms with the site plan regulations set forth by the city of Nashua. Conditions outlined in the staff report are acceptable to us. Of note, um, we have responded to the May fifth comments from Joe Lindola, street construction engineer. I received a second round of comments back from him earlier this afternoon of the original thirty-six comments, there are currently six remaining. I did speak to Mr. Mandola on the phone today to kind of go over the comments with him. And we are both confident that we can address these comments to engineering satisfaction. I'd be happy to now answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thanks, um, so I just have a couple myself and then, um, how many units are there at the adjacent Pine Hill Gardens, is that the one?
Um, yes, so the, the Pine Hill Gardens, I'm gonna go to the, back to the aerial. Um, so Pine Hill Gardens is this piece here as well as this, and then it continues further to the south. I believe there's a, there's about a hundred and eighty-eight total units according to the, um, Pine Hill Gardens website.
Okay. Do you, do you know how many parkings, you, you mentioned that this lot was intended for use for both? Uh, uh, what's the parking density for Pine Hill Gardens, is it, is it at the one point nine or one point?
So, so we, obviously that we didn't survey the, uh, uh, adjacent Pine Hill Gardens property. I did go out there, um, earlier today and just by my count, I, I think there are about three hundred parking spaces, which is less than the one point nine maximum allowed.
So it's less than, you think there's about three hundred?
Correct. So the, the maximum allowed would be three hundred and fifty-seven based on one point nine and a hundred eighty-eight units.
Yeah, so if you had a hundred and eighty-eight units plus, there's how many building, twenty-nine units at the new one?
Correct.
So one eighty-eight plus twenty-nine, that's two seventeen units between the two roughly?
Correct.
And you said the max was one point nine? That we currently have on our ordinances? So that'd be, that'd be four hundred and twelve spaces? If you were to combine those two allowed?
I, I believe that is correct.
Roughly, so when you're proposing somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred existing, I'm talking the two together now, plus.
So, so the, the two together would, would total about three hundred eighty-seven. Um, a max, maximum allowed for two hundred and seventeen units would be four hundred and twelve units.
Okay.
Again, I, I, I want to kind of reiterate that it, it's, it's a peak parking demand, um, for both parcels. Um, but really the focus because it's on the Oakwood Square parcel, um, i- i- is, it's also to answer the peak, peak parking demand at that parcel. And I think that Pine Hill Gardens just also, um, benefits from the, the proximity and then a combined ownership with Oakwood Square.
Do, um, is there, I mean, would you be amenable to, um, I guess I'm thinking down the road, Pine Hill Gardens or something was sold? And, you know, would those units still have access to this lot? Would that be a condition you would approve, you would be willing to? You know, I'm, I'm, the only reason I'm getting at this is, you know, it's, um, it's sort of like you're, you're kind of want this lot for two things. So I, I have to look at this myself anyway in a bigger picture here, so.
Sure, so, so as, as I, and I may have gone through it a little quickly, um, th- there will be a, a formal, um, agreement in place for Pine Hill Gardens to utilize that site in the proposed parking lot addition.
Okay, alright, appreciated that. Um, okay, um, questions from the board, Mr. Weber?
Yes, um, currently, uh, there's a whole bunch of trees that are currently, um, you know, abutting Cypress. Uh, it would be really nice if, uh, as many as those can be remain, uh, because of the heat that a parking lot, you know, gives out. And what you're putting in are very small trees, so, uh, what is your proposal for those trees?
So, unfortunately, I, I think just due to the kind of nature of the construction on the site, I don't know how many of those trees could feasibly be saved through a, a, a construction, um, through the construction process. Um, certainly, I, I think if there's an opportunity to do so, I, I think that, that we would be amenable to that. But I think the, the likelihood of it is that the major, that the majority to all of those trees would need to come down just due to regular construction activities, due to some regrading. You, uh, obviously a, a large portion of those are being, um, removed due to the entrance curb cut drive onto Cypress. Um, I hope that answers your question.
Well, what I'd, I'd like you to work with, um, administration and to really, um, to look at, uh, because of, um, of, um, blacktop and what it does is it really heats up and it gets that area really hot. Especially in this time of the year, right now, we're getting ninety degree weather, if that's blacktop, that whole area gets really hot. And that's where, um, trees come about and you're only putting in, uh, I think, four trees. Um, and that really, uh, is not, not very much compared. Also, um, there's a whole bunch of, uh, gravel on the, um, let's see, the, the east side of the parking is on that east side, there's a whole, a lot of gravel and landscaping debris, that's gonna be, I don't know if it's right on your property or close to your property. I, I believe it's somewhat on your property and abutting where the other cars are to the, uh, right of your property as you see. Are you aware of that?
Yeah, I, I did notice that when I was, uh, like I mentioned, I took a drive by the site and walked around a little bit earlier today. Um, I, I'm not, truthfully, I'm not exactly sure why that is there. I can imagine that likely there was some type of landscaping activity, um, obviously that in the construction process, that material will either be utilized onsite or removed in a, in a proper manner.
Okay, the bus stop and existing bench there does, uh, it does help for the people that are sitting on those benches waiting for a bus to have, uh, the coolness of the tree protection or shade from the trees. And I would really, uh, like you guys to, uh, look at what you can save and see if you can really do something about to mitigate the construction, if it can be worked around, if the trees are, have the ability to stay uh, tight with all your, you know, whatever you can do to mitigate the cutting of those. I understand some of them have to be cut, I know that. Uh, but if you can mitigate some of that so that, um, they will, uh, put it as a priority if you can.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I can mention that too, once a site contractor is selected and, um, that can be part of the ongoing discussions. Uh, obviously, as you know, it, it really kind of depends on where, where the base of those fall. And obviously the canopy spreads out as, as the trees grow up. Um, but if there's an opportunity to save some, some, uh, some trees or some of the large plantings in that, that area, I, I think we can try to do that.
Okay, and your snow removal, where that, was that gonna be going?
So the, the snow, the snow removal would likely, uh, it's really kind of a small parking lot. So really the, um, you would see snow removal i- into the areas of either where one of the two proposed basins are or, um, some of the open space around the corners of the parking lot. There, there's not a ton of snow storage due to the, the proximity of the, the property boundaries. But the, the reality is that it's a smaller sized parking lot, so there, it shouldn't generate enormous stockpiles of snow.
Okay, and, uh, should not, uh, cover the handicap areas, right?
Correct, absolutely. That, that, that's the, that's the corner of the parking lot where the access to the site is also provided. So, uh, that, I, I think that logic kind of states there that the, the contractor wouldn't pile snow up around that corner of the parking lot.
Exactly, thank you.
Other board members, questions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, have a question.
Mr. Hirsch, yep.
Will any, uh, site lighting be provided? Uh, I had trouble looking at the plan, I, I didn't see any lighting indicated.
So, uh, I, and again, I may have gone a little too quickly during my presentation, there, there is no proposed site lighting in the area. As I mentioned during the existing conditions, there's, there's really kind of an enormous overhead electrical easement over that, the majority of that portion of the site. So really locating any, any, um, acceptable in terms of dark sky compliant or non-floodlight style lights in that area, um, we found would be next to impossible. And also due to the, the fact that it's really kind of a residential style area, we felt that large industrial style floodlights really didn't fit the, the characteristics in the neighborhood.
It, it seems like it'll be a problem and, and from a security point of view. Cause people, uh, back there, you can have cars and it, it won't be a whole lot of visibility from the roads, especially that any lighting in there.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and I think that this was kind of a, a discussion with, with our client, the owner of the property. Um, it, it really came down to, um, if he was comfortable enough not really having great lighting in this area, um, without providing necessarily these, um, large, like I mentioned, industrial style lights. But we felt that that was a, a more, in, in terms of being a friendly neighbor, that was a more important factor here in this area was to not really provide these large floodlights, which as you know, will have large amounts of lights escaping the property and, um, really intruding on some of these abutting properties.
Yeah, I've seen much, you know, lower intensity lights used in places like that, that's why I was kind of wondering, uh, that just, it, it lighting an immediate area rather than, than the entire lot.
Correct, but the, the, again, the other controlling factor is the overhead easement. We, we couldn't really put a, a traditional style facing downward light due to the, we have electrical wires in a close proximity, close proximity directly over this. So, um, i- initially we did, we were looking at, um, a traditional style parking light. But the, the reality is that we couldn't cite it under this easement, um, due to ever source or the S and H, um, easement and restrictions.
I see. Um, another question if I could, um, fencing between the residential lot to the west, i- is there, is there a fence there right now, I couldn't, couldn't tell, and what will be the barrier?
Yep, exactly, so, um, th- there's a, there's an existing, I believe it's wood stockade fence along that property line. Um, there is, and, and if you can still see my screen and my cursor, there is some vegetation on, on their side of the, the fence. Um, there's a tiny bush or two on our side, but that, it really doesn't provide any good screening. But I, I believe that there's a, a six, six-foot wood stockade fence that runs the length of this, um, prop, shared property boundary with some, um, larger vegetated bush on their, their side of the property.
Okay, a- another question if I could, the, uh, the townhouse units, are those condominiums that are individually owned? Or are they owned by one, one party?
Um, so, so our, our client, I believe, has ownership of the entire, um, development. Um, so, so our, our client, I believe has ownership of the entire, um, development.
So, so they're not condominiums and they're, um, fee simple ownership?
I, I think that would be correct, so I, I misspoke earlier, I apologize.
Okay, thank you, that's all the questions I have.
Other questions from the board?
Uh, yes, I have a question.
Mr. Peterson?
Uh, today, the board received, uh, an email dated July ninth from one of the neighbors at nineteen High Pine Avenue. And they were concerned that, uh, the initial proposal of low impact lighting would transition to that of. High pole, high impact lighting, but from what the applicant just stated, there won't be any lighting, is that correct?
Yeah, that would, that is correct, I, I did see the email, um, to planning earlier and, and I think that, that the kind of discussion, the. The ongoing discussion of lighting in this area kind of, um, s- solved, if you will, it's not a great term, but, um. Kind of mitigates that comment.
Yeah, I, I don't think the, the neighbor's concern is of any importance because there won't be any lighting rather than too much lighting.
I, I think that would be correct and, and obviously, like I had mentioned, that, that was part of our ongoing lighting discussions is that we, we really didn't want to provide. Um, big light levels in really a, a very residential area.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions by the board?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Ballinger?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I, I think, Mr. Chair, I think you, you may have addressed this to some extent, I just wanted to clarify, uh. The, the current applicant, uh, Oakwood Square, that, that is a condominium organization, if I understand this correctly. And with regard to any, uh. If you want to call it a cross easement or dual use with the, uh, same owner of the property to the east. I, my presumption is that this has to be formally adopted by. I, I'm assuming that there's some governing condominium documents that, that, you know, that, that board would, would have to. Agree to this, um, I, I just want to clarify that. Uh, that, that legal instrument will, will be in place to, um, to deal with that. Um, so I guess that's, that's, that's question number one, uh, and I'll, I'll let Mr. Beals, uh, answer that if he could. And my apologies again if that's duplicate information, I just want to clarify that.
No, yes, no, I, I apologize if I, um, may have incorrectly stated the, the, the actual ownership, so. Um, that our client is the owner of Oakwood Square LLC, um, which is, as you could see, the Stabile Companies. Um, s- um, the Stabile Companies has committed to providing a formal agreement for this parking lot with the abutting Pine Hill Gardens. Um, for overflow parking access on the Oakwood Square parcel by Pine Hill Garden residents. I, I hope that wasn't a too confusing way to state that.
No, Mr. Beals, thank you for the clarification, I, I, I guess, I, I just wanted to, to put it out there. I understand it's, it's one thing for the owner of the property to commit to that, but, um. I, I know sometimes that condominium associations have, you know, very, very extensive governing documentation, therefore. It, it's not, I believe, and again, I'm not the legal expert, it's not just up to the owner to decide that. I believe that the, the owners of the individual units through their governing board would have to accept that as well. Um, through, through their governing documents, so I just wanted to make sure that it's not just a commitment of the landowner. It's also in essence a commitment of the individual property owners.
Yeah, and, and I, I, I think you kind of hit the nail on the head initially, I, you as, as I am not. Um, also a, a legal expert in this, in this sense of the mean. Um, or really in any sense, but, um, so I, I, I can't state the, 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 the legalities of any formal agreement. But I, I do know that the Stabile Companies, in our discussion with them, has, um, committed and. And is confident in their ability to put forth, uh, an agreement with the abutting Pine Hill Garden, so. I, I hope, I, I hope that somewhat answers your question.
No, I, and I appreciate that, Mr. Beals, thank you, um, I do have one additional question, um.
Sure.
Uh, uh, understanding that there is, uh, the P S and H easement. Uh, i- 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 it, it's a pretty extensive easement, I, I can't, I don't have the, the plan here, I'm having trouble reading. I, isn't it about a hundred foot width? Um, did P S and H have any input into the ability? With this application to, to access their equipment, their lines, et cetera, whether or not this, this wouldn't be an impediment. Or impediment rather, or did you get any feedback from P S and H?
Uh, you are correct, it, it's a hundred foot easement, it, it's definitely significant easement over especially this portion of the site. Um, as with any especially overhead easement, there, there's a formal essentially joint use agreement that is set in place. Um, as, as the, the easement takes hold, if you will, um, a- and so as part of that joint use agreement. Um, there's certain things that the property owner obviously has rights to do on their own site. Um, that being said, um, we are going to be working with ever so, or ever source P S and H. Prior to the construction process, um, to make sure that, that not only do the plans, but also the, the work being performed. Under this easement is acceptable to them because the reality is, and when we have large, um, dump trucks or excavators. That, that also poses, um, some type of threat to their, um, overhead electrical access or, excuse me. Eclectrical lines, and so any really work in the area, though, um, though prior. Though allowed under the joint use agreement, any work in the area would need to be, um, reviewed by them ahead of construction.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Beals.
Uh, Mr. Hudson, I think was next, and then Mr. Peterson, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, this is the first that I'm hearing that this parking lot would be shared within the abutting property. Uh, I don't know if Mr. Mandola was aware of that, I certainly wasn't aware of that. Um, and so, and I'm, uh, kind of struggling thinking about, you know, what impact does it have? I'm looking at the site plan, I see no pedestrian connection to the abutting parcel. That street, it appears that there's a fence along a, a portion of the property. Um, so, I don't know what the mechanism is, if we approve this, if they can just go, you know, grant access to parking to an abutment without our. Additional review and approval, but I don't know if I'd be in favor of that at this point. Um, is it, because, uh, I don't think we've worked out the, uh, interconnection details, uh, that there would need to be.
Okay. Mr. Peterson, is that a Mr. Hudson or, yeah, you? Uh, Mr. Peterson, did you have a question for the applicant?
No, I do not have a question.
Sorry, I thought you had one. Um, I guess I have a question for staff, I mean, it, it, it does appear to me there's some. I don't think, I don't know if confusion is the word or, or not necessarily enough. Understanding or, or, uh, in, in the board at the moment on the. The mechanisms that would be required to ensure, I mean, essentially. We're seeing sort of a development here that supports. Two. Two parcels or two, two sets of units and, um. Which, you know, in and of itself doesn't, you know, might make total sense to me. But what, you know, i- is definitely, are these condominiums and how, how would this functionally? Get codified so that, you know, if someone, I'm not sure we all want to approve this if it's just for one of the. One of the, um, developments, right, so. Do you understand the ownership structure there?
No, I, I, and I'll, I'll be honest, I wasn't involved this, um, this, I was handling this in our office, but.
Yep.
Um, the shared parking, actually, for me, this is the first time that I'm hearing of it tonight as well. I didn't realize it was going to be for both, and, and it, it could be that, you know, Scott was working with them and, and it was all work. I don't honestly know, um, but I do understand the board's concerns and if people are, how they're going to do that shared and. I would assume, and I'm not a lawyer, that they would have to have some kind of agreement. Um, if they're going to be sharing it, but I, I, I honestly don't know.
Yeah, our board, um, local lawyer that sits on the board is a little, little bit tired either, so, um.
I mean.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure, yeah.
So, so, like I had kind of mentioned earlier. I, I think that the, the. It, it wasn't our original, it wasn't our intent at all, obviously, to, to hide the fact that, that. Some portion of this parking is, can, can be shared by Pine Hill Gardens. Um, uh, i- it was, it was outlined in, in our waiver letter, um, which was dated June twentieth. Um, in terms of formal communications with the city. Um, but the, 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 the intent of the parking lot is really to provide. Um, the, an overflow for Oakwood Square, number one, without a question, because it's on the Oakwood Square property. Um, those are fairly tight parkings, parking lots and our client has experienced the, like I mentioned, a high peak parking demand. And then really just due to its proximity and, and some type of shared ownership with the abutting Pine Hill Gardens. Is, i- i- is really to also provides an additional benefit at the end of the day for the abutting Pine Hill Gardens, so. Um, it.
Sure.
I don't know if its intent is necessarily is a fifty fifty split between the two properties. Is, um, what I know is that, that the, the ownership group has experienced high parking demands. For Oakwood Square and then the parking lot also has the additional benefit of its proximity due to Pine Hill Gardens.
Right, yeah, I, I don't, um, I don't think the intent is necessarily. What I'm picking up on the board's confusion, it, it tends, it's, it's more the. The, the ability to actually. Make this part of the application so that it is solid and, you know, it. You know, so I'm not sure, I don't know, we can talk about it. Um, amongst the board, but I personally, I'm not sure how to write a stipulation or something else at this point. On how to ensure that that sharing, because to me, the success of this lot. Is that it does support both, probably, it seems frankly excessive to me to, for, they're just the one, you know? Um, so I don't think it's a bad idea on that front, I think we might be just missing some information that allows us. To be comfortable that there's a solid legal agreement that can be developed.
Scott, I think you got muted somehow.
Sorry, did you hear most of it or?
Yeah, I think it was just the last thirty seconds.
Oh, okay, yeah, so, so again, I think it was just the, um. You know, I'm interested to see from the board, are, are there any other questions, I mean, we can. Talk about it in the, in the meeting for sure, but Mr. Weber?
Yes, um, who, um. Who's going to be maintaining, this is more of a question, um, you know, this is just. Allowing the other place to, hey, if you guys want a few parking spots, just because we have access, it's different, but. Uh, I'm just saying the, who's going to maintain it, is that going to be a joint maintain or just? Oakwood is going to be maintaining the pro, the parking lot.
I, 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 I don't, I don't want to, I'm not exactly sure, so I don't want to, um, m- make a guess. Um, it's something I'm sure that I can find the answer to pretty quickly in talking with the Stabile Companies. Um, I, I, my understanding is that the, the Stabile Companies or some entity of them provides maintenance for both lots. Um, for both Oakwood and Pine Hill Gardens, there's really an overseeing Stabile Companies entity that provides maintenance. Um, and then additional landscaping in the area, so I think the, the, um. The maintenance of the lot would also fall under that same entity that maintains both lots.
Thank you.
Sir Chairman?
Yep, go ahead, Mr. H.
Uh, I have another question, the, uh, it may just be my, my inability to read the plan very well here. Uh, on the east or east side of the parking lot where the butts, uh, Pine Hill, whatever, uh, is there a fence there or a wall there or? What, because the, the problem would be I would see people driving from one lot to the other lot across. An open area. You've got your spaces.
Yeah. If, if I may, there, there is no current, um, there is no current fence or really anything that would prevent that. Um, if, if you can see on the existing condition plans, in fact, there, there's a portion of that, a portion of that lot that actually encroaches onto the Oakwood.
Right.
Site, um, so there, there's nothing along this property boundary, but in the proposed condition. There, there will be this, this essentially depression basin, um, that I think would, I would be surprised if anyone. Willingly would, would try to drive across that, including a, a gravel trench at the bottom of it, I, I think it provides kind of a clear, clear. Distinction or definition in the land in that area between the two parking lots.
It just, it just seems like it should be some separation of some sort, some sort of fence or whatever, uh, to keep people from trying to drive across that or inadvertently driving into it. Uh, from the spaces that are any other property.
Yeah, and I, I mean, that, I, I would have to ask, ask this, um, our client what, what they thought about that and, and perhaps maybe the. A, a solution would be some tire stops along, um, in, in some of those key parking spaces along that area. Um, and, but I, I, I think that's really kind of something that, that the client would look at post-construction, um. Because until that, that kind of basin and that definition is provided in that area, I don't think, I don't think we can really picture what that area looks like. And how flat or not flat it may be and the willingness for cars to essentially drive down and across into the abutting lot. I, I definitely, I, I understand your point for sure, um, but I think that would be something that the client may want to address post-construction.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board during the hearing here? Uh, Mr. Beal, if you could stop showing your screen for a minute and just so I can see the board a little bit better, can you agree?
Yep, one second.
Okay, not hearing any questions?
Oh, I'd like to just point out one, um, it's, it's not a question, but, uh, one of the abutters chimed in on the chat board. And she has a question.
I did see that.
Person from, uh, ten High Pine Avenue has a question on the.
Yeah, I'll open that up, thanks.
Yeah.
All right, not, not hearing any further questions from the board at this time, uh, so, uh, at this point, I entertain anybody from. Sort of the general audience who wants to, uh, speak on a question on the, on the plan. Um, I understand this Mallett, maybe, as indicated. Sure, go ahead, just make sure you state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure, my name's Amy Mallett, uh, I live at ten High Pine Ave, so my property is, um, butts the entire parking lot.
Okay.
Um, just a couple of things I wanted to mention before I start, um, some of the debris and the piles that you were talking about earlier. That was some, um, excavation work that started in that area back at the end of March of removing boulders and then all of a sudden things stopped. Um, the other thing, uh, you were talking about snow removal, snow removal over Pine Hill Gardens is done by Stabile. And over Oakwood Square is done by a contractor, so I'd like to know who would be doing snow removal in this new parking lot. And I, I, I'm not real happy about finding out that the snow removal will be going into the catch basin. That is, um, right along two thirds of my fence, um, between gasoline, oil spillage. Um, and then having that get into the water, that's going to seep over into my yard. Um, I'll, I'll start with that and.
Yeah, you can ask all your questions if you want, I'm sure Mr. Beals is writing them down.
Um, so, I just want to clarify, lighting too, because, um, right now, the only light that's in that area is coming off of the apartment building. Um, at Pine Hill Garden and it is of, uh, it's not a very well lit area, um, and there is, you know. Trouble, there's activity that goes on, um, at night, um, and that's another concern to add all these other parking spaces. Not have it monitored and not have sufficient lighting in that area. Um, the other concern is, um, the three or four spaces that are seven feet away from my fence. Um, who knows, somebody comes in drunk one night, doesn't know how to hit the brake, flames into my, you know, into my yard and, you know. Essentially hit my house. Um. The other thing I wanted to mention too was the, um, the aerial photo is from about four years ago, right after EverSource did the clearing. Um, under the power lines, so there is a lot more vegetation along the fence now than there was, um, when that picture was taken. So there is a lot more vegetation along the fence now than there was um, when that picture was taken.
Okay, okay.
Um, let's see. Just wanna make sure I covered everything.
Sure.
I think that's about it for right now.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to um, speak in opposition concern or have a question? For the applicant? Can either unmute and talk, it doesn't look like there's too many else out there.
Yeah, I don't see anybody with their hand up.
Okay, all right, at this time, um, Mr. Beals, I'll give you a chance to address. Um, some of the questions raised by the butter, I direct your attention to, I counted at least four. Snow removal concern, um, lighting again. And spaces against the uh. Their their sort of property boundary. Can you talk about that a little bit further?
Yeah, sure. Yep, uh, I'll try to keep it brief. Um, like I mentioned, the the lighting was was really try, us trying to find balance sometime. Somewhere between us really not being able to provide tall lighting posts due to the overhead um. Electrical easement as well as not wanting to to really kind of flood the area, if you will, with a floodlight. Um, due to the residential, um, the the abutting residential users. Um, in terms of the snow and then and the concern. Um, on on stormwater, um, there is a mechanism in place for the treatment of that stormwater. Um, the leech and catch basin proposes is a deep sea, deep sump leech and catch basin to provide. Um, some type of pretreatment and then and then the formal treatment practice is infiltration. Um, the goal obviously being. Um, to as the water percolates through the the native soils that these contaminants come out of the. I'm out of the water and infiltration is an approved um, treatment practice by NHDES. Um, as well as in the city of Nashua. Um, a- and I I apologize, like I had mentioned, in terms of snow removal and maintenance, I. I I did not know that there was a difference, I I'm, it can be something that I investigate going forward. Um, and would be happy to provide an answer back to staff on. Um, on as to who will be plowing and maintaining that lot. And I think the 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 final question was was the the parking spaces facing her. Her fence, I I do understand that's a concern and and perhaps that for those couple of spaces we could investigate. Um, maybe the use of of the the tire car stops, if you, I'm sure you you're familiar with with that type of product. I hope I hope that um, kind of addresses some of the comments to the board's satisfaction.
Okay, thanks. Um, the board, any questions?
I I have a quick question.
Mr. Peterson.
Uh, my question's for Mr. Beals, um, so are you still in the position there will be no lighting added to the parking lot?
Yeah, that that is correct, that we we feel that that's the best option for this parking space, parking lot, excuse me.
Which you realize that does not. Address the concerns of the neighbor who says it's it's too dark in that parking lot.
A- absolutely, we we um, a- as we kind of discussed in in the meeting uh, earlier, there was another abutter that had had. Voiced a concern of of really the exact opposite, it it really being. Too light, if you will, based off of a a large, um, either floodlight or high pole light.
Well, the the uh, resident at eighteen Pine Hill Ave was saying low lights were okay. Pole lights were not good, but so they were okay with some lighting and. The recent commenter saying that she would like to see some lighting as well.
Yeah, a- and I mean, it 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 can be something that we look at, again, the reality is that that Eversource really controls what we can do in terms of. Vertical building under their easement, um, and then and then really it's it's one of the remaining options. And and due to the fact that that overhead easement really occupies the majority of that parking lot, the really only solution. Would be available is some type of large floodlight that is flooding the entire parking lot. And then we get into a discussion on it it. A- a- as as you know, overlapping the property boundaries and exceeding the property boundaries.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, a concern I have, I go back to the lighting thing, I just see it as being a very attractive place for people to do things I don't want seen visible. From to the surrounding uh, apartments or whatever else. I feel that there are, and I'm not a lighting expert by any means, but I feel that there are options which go more than, you know. Don't go to the extreme of the floodlights, but they're much lower, uh, you know, uh, intensity lighting must be available. For something like this, they only go eight feet high, you know, rather than beyond that, I mean, Mr. Hudson, maybe you know more than I do about this. Uh, as an engineer, it's available.
Well, I know our residential streets, there is a sort of quite a few. Private residential developments that use the sort of. They're kind of like ten, ten foot tall kind of.
Right.
If you will, but they're pretty, pretty low, I don't know.
They're very, they're very intense, but it would make the place look alive at least. And you wouldn't have the potential criminal activity back there.
Yeah, I've got a couple more hands here, thank you, Mr. Hirsch, do you have any other questions or?
No.
Okay, Mr. Weber. You're still on mute there, Ed?
There we go. On Cypress Street, at the court, the um, let's see, on the. South. East part of uh, on Cypress Street.
Yeah.
Portion, there is a number of electrical poles right there, it's like three right on that street. Uh, any number of those, I don't, I'm not sure, uh, the city or or that. Could work with the builder and they could put a. Um, LED. That would just light that area and that's right there, there's a pole right there that's where the parking bench is for the. Where the bus stop is, that's right there for them, so there is a ability to put. Um, either the city requested by the, from the contractor or the owner, to have a a electrical light there, that is possible. Boom, there you go.
Ms. Harper?
Uh, what what is the height limit? For Eversource? Do you know?
I I I do not know, what I do know is that early on in the project, we had consulted with a. Um, an electrical engineer, a a lighting engineer, um, because initially we we were looking to. Um, we're not, we're we're certainly not opposed to to lighting the area. It was more of a of a balance between what we can do and and what would really be acceptable to a butters and. At the end of the day, we we felt that. While we could maybe look into putting some type of light on that, on the 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 pole men- mentioned by Mr. Weber. Um, then we're in, we're really in a a floodlight style, um, light fixture. Um, and then we're really um, pushing large light levels really out into the neighborhood. Or back onto the abutting properties.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I think the properties he's talking about are the ones that 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 the applicant is proposing the parking lot for, so I don't know, as I object to that. You know, the the resident at uh, number ten would have to. Um, speak to that, but I think she was asking for lighting, so. Um, I had heard a question addressed about how. The interconnection would occur for pedestrians between uh, the abutting lot and this parking lot, um, there's a. You know, a drainage feature between the two, I expect you to walk through that. I also want clarification, access is gonna be shared with the uh, abutting property on the same side of the street? Or is it also gonna be? Is across the street, um, because again, there is no sidewalks, there is no crosswalks, there is no. Uh, what I would consider a suitable route to walk from one place to the other.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions from the board? So, um. I'm gonna sort of go on on him here a little bit, it it appears to me that there are several concerns by the board. Several, you know, a lot of them, which I think could be mitigated with some more information and some more research on the applicant's side. Um, Linda, I'm what, you you know, we have the option obviously to the table these. Can you remind me whether it's more advantageous for the applicant? The table in the hearing or close the hearing and table out of the meeting?
Um.
I mean, I don't know the week there, I want to make it easier for the applicant.
Yeah, I think, I think we should um, give the one abutter the chance for a rebuttal, so we can then.
In the hearing.
Yeah, hearing, you can do that, and then if we're gonna table it to the next meeting, I believe is August fourth. We would just want to have um, a list of questions that we want answered at that time.
And we could do that in the meeting.
Correct.
Correct, okay. All right, um. So I'll I'll reach back out to the audience, um, specifically Ms. Mallett, um, since you're the only one that talked. We do have the opportunity to. One more um. Rebuttal to the applicant's rebuttal, um, if you'd like to take that, you don't have to, but. Any interest? Think you're muted at the moment. Not hearing any or seeing a hand.
I don't, yeah.
Okay.
I I do know. He did put something in the chat about she had concerns about trash and debris.
Okay, I just see that.
I did.
Okay, we can hear you now, go ahead, I'll give you the.
So that was another concern, um, is because even now with the field there, um, you know, the kids play back there. And there's stuff that comes over the fence all the time, I don't think it'll be any better with having a parking lot back there. Um, just seeing some of the activity that's gone on in the other lots. Um, again, I I do want to see lighting back there, um, I don't know if. They can put in some sort of um, taller fence. Um, so that I'm, you know, kind of have a little bit more space between me and the parking lot. Um, and the the other thing I go back to is the irrigation, the drainage system that is runs two thirds along, you know. Along the length of my fence, um, you know, I've called for different things that with. Different issues and I don't get much of a response, so I'm concerned that if there's ever any issues over on this particular part of the property. Then I'm not gonna get any response either.
Okay. So, appreciate that, any other questions? Um, so at this point, I will um. I'll give it back to the applicant, you 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 can make any other responses you want at this time. Um, or or the board as well.
I I think I I'm. I'm comfortable, at at least with the the approach that I I believe that you may be um, leaning towards, Mr. Chairman. Um, as you, as you'd mentioned there, there's still kind of a number of things that I I could. Um, questions that I could address or answer, um, so so I think tabling would would be acceptable to us.
Okay, appreciate that. Um, so, last chance for the board during the hearing here, um. So, hearing none, what I'll do is um, I'm gonna close the hearing, uh, open the meeting. So, I guess you heard my two cents, um, I think there are a few issues and I'm sure the applicant's listening. Um, that I personally would like to see addressed in a little more detail in the plan. Um, I think Mr. Hudson's, you know, comments were right on with, you know, what is the. What is the design for cross connection between this lot and the abutting lots? Um, that in in particularly, how does the, there's a pedestrian access. Uh, across the street on Cypress to the other development. So we'd like to see something there. Um, I would like some clarity on the ownership. Of the two developments and how they um. How the the plan could. Could functionally and reliably codify that the lot. Remains to be able to be used by both developments. You know, even after a sale, potentially, you know, of one of them. Uh, and I think lighting is important as well, we've had a lot of talk about that, I think there are some low level lighting solutions, maybe that could be. Addressed, maybe, maybe they're not full parking lot ones, but I I understand they'll take some discussions with Eversource. And um. But we would like, I would like to see some lighting solution that, you know, mitigates a completely dark lot. And then maybe a further addressing. Um, vehi- vehicular control off of the lot, whether it's bump stops or increased fences or what have you. So those are the things that I'm, I guess we we need a motion from somebody. Would address those items. Um, or ask that the the um, applicant address those items in more detail. If we were want to table.
Mi- Mr. Chair, this is Mr. Bollinger.
Go ahead, Mr. Bollinger, yeah.
Uh, I I I would, I would make a motion to table.
Okay.
At the August meeting. Um, with the supplement that. The board requires additional information or codification regarding ownership of. The subject parcel as well as the adjacent parcel to the east. Further, there needs to be supplemental information. Uh, provided regarding um, cross access easement. Um, general safety concerns, ADA compatibility with crossing between the two lots. Uh, also, uh, ownership and maintenance of the proposed parking facility. As well as additional information related to um, a butter and general public. Concerns or questions regarding lighting.
Mm-hmm.
And. I, I think I had everything on my list, but I I will entertain, um. Uh, I guess officially we'll put that motion out there and then if other board members are able to to tack on anything that I may have forgotten. Um, I I'll I'll sort of leave it there, Mr. Chairman, but thank you.
Okay, so um. Yeah, we have that motion, I guess we would need to second it and then you could.
Oh, um, I I I I would like to add a couple um. Additions to Mr. Bollinger's wording.
Okay, go ahead.
I think somewhere in there, we should define the rights and responsibilities of the two property owners. A- as it pertains to this parking lot.
Yeah, I think he did cover that a little bit in his, his earlier.
Okay, well, if the board is happy with the wording, the proposed wording, we can go with it.
Yeah. Other, anybody else have any voice second, Mr. Bollingers? Somebody want to make a second on Mr. Bollingers, Mr. Weber? Okay, um, further discussion, so. Uh, Linda, does that have the information you need to transmit to the applicant in terms of?
Yes. Yes.
All right.
Do a roll call.
Uh, any further discussion? Nope, let's do a roll vote on that motion.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Bollinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion to table passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you for your time tonight, everyone.
Yep, appreciate it. Okay, moving on with our agenda here, we have uh, new business, uh, site plan, case number five, two sixty seven Main Street Realty LLC. Owner, application acceptance of a proposed one year extension to NR one six two five to construct an eighteen hundred and twenty seven square foot. Coffee shop with drive-through, this is located at two sixty seven Main Street, so do I have a motion to take jurisdiction of this application? So do I have a motion to take jurisdiction of this application? Mr. Weber? Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction, we have a second on it?
A second.
Second by Mr. Hirsch, any further discussion? We get a quick roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That passes eight to zero.
Okay, so, Mr. Bernie, are you here for the, okay, on this one there?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
This was a, um, a, um, approval that you gave back in May. Um, my client, uh, proceeded to try to get the, his permits and franchiser approving everything. And about February or March, they were ready to get the permit when this called COVID nineteen showed up. And he wanted to know what was gonna happen, whether the contractor was able going to, to work, uh, whether the, you know, finances were and so forth. So everything came to a stop and we'd like to continue it for a year because we, once we get past this COVID nineteen, we would like to build this shop.
Okay. Um, any questions on the board for the applicant?
M- Mr. Chair, Mr. Ballinger?
Go ahead, yeah.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify, I have, I have no, no issues with this as proposed. Um, I did just want to clarify because I think this was approved, uh, prior to, to me joining the board. Were, was there any other restriction on the site with regard to moratorium on paving? Or, or anything else on Main Street? I just don't recall if there was already some extenuating circumstance regarding this application.
Mr. Chairman, we, um, if, if there is a motion to continue for the one year, it is subject to all of the conditions that were prior, were previously approved.
Right. Yeah, Mr. Ballinger, the, um, the stipulations are in there, I don't see anything about the moratorium for this, I don't know if Mr. Hudson has any any more information, you know, whether there is one for this site. This is on, you know, right on Main Street there across from, um, the hospital, across from Prospect.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have more information, I don't believe it's in a moratorium. Uh, it is our intent, you know, within the next three years or so to pave that section of Main Street. So it is, it is, it would be prudent for the applicant to, uh, proceed with construction within the next year.
Thank, thank you, thank you, Mr. Hudson.
Any other, um, questions for the applicant from the board? Hearing none. Uh, anybody in the audience who think to speak in office, I can turn to the plan? Not sure there is anybody on. Okay, so that won't happen. All right, uh, any other questions before I close the hearing? All right, this time I'll go ahead and close the hearing, uh, to the meeting. Yeah, I'm pretty, Mr. Ballinger, I'm pretty familiar with the application, you know, we saw a couple of different applications over the years for this site. Um, this one seemed to be the one that was closest to actually happening, so definitely like to see this one happen myself, frankly. Um, so I would be in favor of, uh, giving them some more time to make it work, so, uh, anybody else have any comments they want to make or? Anybody want to make a motion? Anyone?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Weber? Yeah?
Okay, I let it, I let everybody have their chance. New business number five, site plan, one year extension, uh, two sixty seven Main Street. Uh, we'll see in the plan meets in our O one ninety, one forty six D with, uh, all prior conditions of approval are incorporated herein, made part of this plan unless otherwise determined by the planning board.
Great, so, um, any second to that? Motion?
Second.
Uh, I saw Ms. Harper's hand first, so I'm gonna go with her on that. As a second to get that in, um, and then, uh, any further discussion? Okay, let's take a roll vote on that.
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt? Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mr. Bernie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening.
Yeah, good to you. Okay, so, uh, moving on, other business, uh, number one, review of tentative agenda for determination and proposals of regional impact. In our packets, the, um, the projects is listed in the technical review meeting of July sixth, does anybody have a chance to take a look at that document? And want to make a motion as to whether there are any proposals on the upcoming regional impact?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Ballinger?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, based on the projects listed in the July sixth, twenty twenty Technical Review Committee, like to make a motion that there are no projects of, uh, regional impacts.
Okay, so we have that motion by Mr. Ballinger, we have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Mr. Peterson, I'll give it to him on this one. Um, any further discussion? We get a roll vote on that?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so that's it on our agenda, any, uh, discussion items from anybody on the board, Mr. Weber?
Yes, uh, one, just to remind everybody to, uh, keep our tabled items that we just had, you want to keep that, don't throw that one away. Um, the other thing is, um, I was wondering any updates as far as when we're gonna be, because I know that other, um, like Hudson has had public meetings at their, wherever they have it at the school. Um, they had a public meeting and people were separated and that was, uh, almost six weeks ago they did that. Uh, is there any update as far as when we're gonna be meeting? I mean, this is great.
You mean we're gonna have planning board meetings back in the auditorium?
Yes, any update as far as when that's gonna start happening?
Well, right now motor vehicles is using the auditorium.
Yeah.
So we.
Kick them out.
So we're gonna be doing this for a while, Ed.
All right, any other discuss?
Yeah, I, uh, just Linda, don't, uh, don't, don't jump out of it, I need to talk to you afterwards.
Any, um, anybody else for discussion items? Anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
I have a motion to adjourn by Mr. Peterson, uh, could we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mike Peterson?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Schmidt? Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, we are adjourned at nine nineteen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah.
See you on the floor.